Good evening. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening. If you will please stand to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led tonight by Gabriela Gettitis, a third grader from James P. Butler. Gabriela?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Gabriela. Y'all may be seated. And we will continue with item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinosa?
Yes, President Nahara and members of the board. I'm very pleased to introduce the newest members of our elite Socorro ISD team. All of these individuals have demonstrated tremendous leadership potential, and we can't wait to see the huge impact that they'll have on our students and our entire community. So as I call your name, please stand to be recognized. First, the new principal of Hernando Middle School, Ms. Valerie Hairston. Ms. Deanna White, new principal at Purple Heart Elementary. Waco Elementary, new principal, Ms. Daisy Garcia. New Assistant Principal at Desert Win, Mr. Ben Melendez. And new Assistant Principal at Montwood High School, Ms. Yolanda Solis. Congratulations to all of you, keep working hard, because the sky is the limit. Also, our mother-daughter conference will be held on Saturday, January 26th, at El Dorado High School, so we look forward to seeing many, many of our special moms at El Dorado High School on Saturday, January 26th, for the Mother Daughter Conference. And speaking of special, we have a super special announcement tonight. Socorro ISD, we have done it again. Our school district has been named a finalist for the third time in four years in the HEB Excellence in Education Awards. And what's pretty amazing about that is that here in El Paso, we're not even an HEB market. Yes, I wish we had some HEBs here, but we are finalists. We were a finalist in 2016, 2017, and now in 2019. And the only thing more special is for us to win it this time, and y'all know what they say, the third time is a charm. But what makes this one even more special is that along with our school district being one of five school districts across the state of Texas for the district finalists, our Board of Trustees have also been named a finalist for the HEB Excellence in Education Award. So already, as a finalist, our district earned $5,000, a $5,000 award, and our school board also earned another $5,000, and HEB will announce the winners on May 5th, which is a Sunday. So stay tuned on Twitter to see if we bring home the big prize for our amazing, amazing SISD students. President Nahara, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinosa. Item number four, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinosa. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. And our first recognition that we will introduce tonight is a tribute to you, the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees, in honor of School Board Recognition Month. The theme of this year's recognition is planting seeds of success, which reflects the important role our board members play in creating a foundation of endless opportunities for our students in our district. Although the responsibilities of our school board may not always be visible, they are most definitely essential. The guidance and nurturing leadership of our school board ensures our students grow academically and reap a high-quality, well-rounded education. The commitment of our Board of Trustees is unmatched across the state. Their positive attitudes, transparent, and trustworthy actions make them a much celebrated and recognized board. Most recently, as noted by Dr. Espinosa, the SISD Board of Trustees was recognized as a finalist in the 2019 HEB Excellence in Education Awards Program. This is the first time a school board from the El Paso area has been named a finalist in the prestigious program, which recognizes exceptional school districts and governing boards. Our Team SISD Board of Trustees also have been selected twice as the Region 19 Board of the Year, and they earned the prestigious title of Texas Honor Board, which is one of the highest achievements a Texas school board can earn. So congratulations for all of those accomplishments.
Thank you.
On behalf of the 46,800 students and 6,000 employees in the district, we want to take this time, dedicated, time to thank you, our dedicated individuals, for your time and effort that you devote in support of SISD students and schools. And we have a special video to thank you for providing each of our students with endless opportunities. In acknowledgement of January 2019 as School Board Recognition Month, we have several tokens of our appreciation for you. On the table to your left and to the audience's right, you will find student artwork, memorable campus items, and baskets filled with school spirit objects. At this time, Dr. Espinosa, Board Trustees, if you will please step down to receive the next portion of our presentation. It is a gift and a symbol, and this gift was once a small seed, but after much care, it has flourished into a beautiful plant that stands tall, much like our students, who are nurtured under your leadership. And featured in this video and here to present you with this gift of appreciation are, from Pebble Hills High School student Trinity Anderson. Es Contreras Elementary student Andres Estrada. And Sergeant Josef Carrasco student Olivia Higgins. And we also have a few special words from Vince Gonzalez, who is a student also at Jose Carrasco Elementary School.
From Team SISD students, we want to say thank you. We are an awesome district where young minds blossom and grow.
Thank you, students, and we have one last gift for you today. Our talented students from Americas High School, Socorro High School, and Puente's Middle School created these unique personalized garden gnomes to commemorate this year's planting seeds of success themes. Our student representatives will present their gnomes to our Board Trustees. We'll begin with our Board President, Ms. Cynthia Nahara. Next, Board Vice President, Angelica Rodriguez. Our Board Secretary, Mr. Tony Ayub. One of a kind, handcrafted just for you. It's a gnome, it's a gnome, it's a gnome. Next, Board Trustee, Mr. Hector Gonzalez. Board Trustee, Mr. Gary Gandara. Next, we have Board Trustee, Mr. Paul Guerra. And rounding out our award-winning team of eight, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jose Espinosa. Alright, students, if we can please have you back up front with our board and superintendent, we'll take a photo to commemorate today's recognition of Board Recognition Month. Alright. We'll pick the mushroom. Awesome, thank you so much to our Board of Trustees for everything that you do. We'll continue with our board recognitions. Up first, we will recognize a group of students from Campesina Elementary School for winning SISD's annual robotics competition, Robocom 5.0. The Cosmic Cobras competed against some 50 teams district-wide and won the Inspire Award for their robot design, creativity, presentation, effectiveness, and team spirit. The competition theme was "Into Orbit" and challenged students to build a project that focused on robotics and explained how humans can survive in space for the long term. Congratulations to these amazing, out-of-this-world students. They are Alina Rodriguez. Natalie Lopez. Jude Rodriguez. Israel Torres. And their coach is Elias Rangel Jr. Students, if we can have you please back to the front for a photo with our board and superintendent. Just a quick note, while they're gathering for the photo, the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on our district website. There's a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner where the photos are available for free, high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize talented young athletes in our district for winning the 2018 Volunteer After-School Sports Program Soccer Championship. VASP, which celebrated its 20th anniversary this year, provides after-school physical activity for students, increases volunteer parental involvement, and helps students attain more interest in their school grades. Thousands of athletes in pre-K to sixth grade participated in the program. The students acquired great sportsmanship, skill, and had fun playing the game. Congratulations to this year's VASP champions. In the Pee-wee divisions, the champions are from Robert Rojas Elementary School. They are, absolutely round the applause. Carla Hernandez. A.J. Delgado. Jesus Bacar. Violeta Bacar. Erin Mendez. Christian Mendez. Cassandra Reyes. Mateo Mondreal. Sebastian Mendez. Assistant coach is Sylvia Mendez. And the team is led by Head Coach Angel Mendez. You're there for each other. Alright, if we can have the team back up front for a photo with our superintendent and board. Awesome, congratulations once again. The winners in the minors division are from H.D. Hilli Elementary School. They are Mathias Lofgren. Matthew Rodriguez. Mercedes Jimenez. Giovanni Gebara. Mathias Mourinho. Nicolas Rodriguez. Xavier Sanchez. Ian Gonzalez. Jesse Chacon. Emilia Salinas. Assistant coaches are Ismael Gonzalez. Efren Gebara. Bernadette Lopez. And their head coach is Lucia Jimenez. Three times. And this is a three-peat for the H.D. Hilli VASP soccer team. Three-time district champion. Alright, if we have everybody look right in the middle, look right at Mr. Largo, right there in the center. Alright, keep smiling, looking straight ahead, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. Champions in the intermediate category are from Mission Ridge Elementary School. They are Jose Luis Villalobos. Lorenzo Herrera. Karen Reyes. Neilia Calderón. Devin Contreras. Ian Castillo. Federico Cortinas. Hugo Rocha. Jayden Mendez. Pizel Delgado. Emiliano Gomez. Assistant coaches are Alva Gomez. Mario Chavez. Lily Gonzalez. And they're led by Head Coach Danny Gomez. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Congratulations once again. Champions in the seniors division are from Jane A. Hambrick School. They are Angel Aranda. They are Angel Aranda. Obert Barrios. Camila Caldera. Mia Delgado. Emery Espinoza. Jaylene Espinoza. Mark Calnes. Dominic Ortiz. Jerry Portillo. Julian Rojas. Damian Muñoz. Luis Rivera. Assistant coaches Gerardo Portillo. And they're led by head coach Lilia Barrios. Can you still get with this? Alright, everybody hold up certificates, will you hold up certificates? There you go. Alright, everybody look straight ahead, right out of the caveys. Alright, congratulations once again. And the champions in our pros division are from Manuel R. Puentes Middle School. They are Julia Sadecas. Summer Nahara. Jasmine Alvarado. Emily Lopez Mata. Jesús Sanchez. Diego Torres. Nueva Freire. Yair Terrazas. Andrew De Leon. Leonardo Granados. Gerardo Gutierrez Jr. Assistant coaches Guadalupe Escobell. And they're led by head coach Gerardo Gutierrez. Alright, will you hold up your certificates? Look right in the center and just keep smiling. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Did we get them up? Congratulations once again. They all have athletic, it's in their blood. And we also have our number one supporter of our VAS program, it is a volunteer program, is Josie Williams. If you'll please come forward. Ms. Williams? If we like a photo, if you don't mind. Thank you so much for all you do for our students. Sixteen years volunteering in the program to support our kids, thousands and thousands of kids impacted, thank you so much. We have one special presentation this evening to recognize Montwood Middle School employees for their quick response in assisting a student during a medical emergency. The employees used an automated external defibrillator, or AED, and their life-saving skills to help the student. Thanks to their knowledge, the student was responsive by the time paramedics arrived. Thank you to these outstanding students, excuse me, outstanding TMS ISD professionals for going above and beyond to help one of our students. There was four of them that assisted from Montwood Middle School. I'll read the names too that weren't able to attend but still deserve the recognition. Martin Venteria and Desiree Nava, they're both teachers from Montwood Middle School. And then with us tonight, teacher from Montwood Middle, Marie Annette Gonzalez. And campus nurse Bertha O'Harker. Congratulations again and thank you so much. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening, thank you.
Okay, that was, wow, that was a lot of fun, that was great. We're gonna continue now with item number six, Board of Trustees Business, a consider approval of National School Counselors Week proclamation, Ms. McCabon.
Good evening President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Each year the American School Counsel Association recognizes school counselors for their dedication and their work with students. This year our National School Counseling Week is February 4th through the 8th, 2019. This evening I have two students and their counselors that are gonna be reading the proclamation. We have from Hambrick School, a 4th grader Chloe Kolar with her counselor Ms. Lopez. And from Clark Middle School, a 7th grader Anahi Bruman with her counselor Ms. Hansby.
Proclamation, whereas school counselors are employed in public and in private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and realistic goals for themselves. And whereas student counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim February 4th through 8th, 2019 as National School Counseling Week.
And we ask that the board accept the proclamation as read?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gondeta, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries, thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven, open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda. But we will give all presentations our serious consideration, thank you, and let's proceed to open forum. Our first speaker tonight is Veronica Hernandez.
Good evening President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and school board members. My name is Veronica Hernandez and I am president of the Socorro American Federation of Teachers. On behalf of the Socorro AFT members and myself, I want to extend a personal invitation to you, our members, SISD employees, and the audience here to get on the bus with us on March 10th, 2019, to rally at the Capitol for the Texas AFT march on the 11th. It is our turn to educate the legislature about our priorities and tell them to do what's right. AFT will provide a free round-trip transportation, a one-night stay at the night of the March the 10th. All participants will receive legislative orientation and lunch at the Capitol grounds. On March 11th, we will head to the Capitol and join the thousands of other educators across the nation to tell them, to tell our state legislatures what we expect them to accomplish. Enough is enough. They need to fully fund Texas public schools by increasing state funding to the levels necessary for all students to meet the state's academic expectations and for educators to receive pay comparable to similarly situated professionals and health benefits equivalent to the governors and every other state employee. They need to ensure continued and stable funding for public schools and community colleges by utilizing existing and new revenue sources that include, that should include the elimination of corporate tax breaks and a requirement for tax fairness and transparency. They need to repeal punitive accountability systems and secluding sanctions that forced closure of schools, that forced takeover by charter schools and other outside management organizations. The use of single letter to label school districts and campuses and stigmatization of students and teachers based on test scores. Our 5.4 million Texas schoolchildren have waited long enough for meaningful school finance reform. Our school finance system remains underfunded and outdated, we need a fix now. I urge you to join us, Texas can't do better. My staff and I have registration sheets, please see us if you wanna get on the bus. We need to speak out and stand together, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Ivy Flodis.
Good evening, SISC board members, directors, and community members present tonight, thank you for allowing me to speak up on behalf of Pebble Hills High School, the baseball program, parents, and coach Arturo Velazquez. I'm here to express not only the dissatisfaction and concerns over the way that SISD has handled player safety concerns on the field and coach appreciation off the field at the high school level, in particular within the PHHS baseball program. It has come to my attention that within the last few days, SISD has been trying to clean up a few loose ends and I'm here to hopefully make sure that they don't become unraveled again. Several key players amongst the SISD have played a major role in why we are here today. When ED9 became Pebble Hills, the field should have been included in the remodel, unfortunately it was not. The baseball field has been in disarray since 2016 and many years before then and unfortunately, they could have and should have been playing on a much better, they should have been played much better role in getting the field up to the appropriate safety standards. However, that wasn't the case and accidents did happen, too many to keep track of quite honestly. But in reality, one was more than enough. I have in my hand several documents in which, in regards to player injuries, but I'd like to point out the following one, which is the most recent one from 2018, which one of our players suffered an ankle injury on the baseball field at PHHS and cost his parents over $1,500 in medical. This injury and many others could have been avoided if the advice and concerns from not only the parents but of Coach Velazquez would have been heated. The other concerns that just boggles our mind is that the dismissal of Coach Arturo Velazquez. SISD prides itself on being the district to be at and y'all go as far as stating that TMS ISD works hard to educate and treat every student as if they are your own children and that student safety and support is your number one priority. Well, Coach Velazquez was the epitome of just that, what was it that he did wrong? He had friends just like many other coaches in this district and in others, however, what happened to Coach Velazquez went totally against what TMS ISD stands for. Coach Arturo Velazquez has been noted to be as one of the best baseball coaches around and he is one with amazing work ethic. He puts himself on the line for others, but most of all, he puts himself on the line for his students and the safety of his athletes. He was all about instilling values in each of his players and those players, believe it or not, actually looked up to him in many ways that y'all would never understand. Sure, we understand that there are rules, but what rule did he break that caused harm to another student or player? He broke that so-called rule in order to ensure the He broke that so-called rule in order to ensure the safety of his players on that playing field. So what is, what is it that you're teaching your students, or your children, as you call them? Is the word that you're trying to get out to other coaches and teachers that if you do what we're standing for, you just might lose your job? I ask how many of you walk the hallways on your highs, at the high schools, and actually observe the connection that teachers or coaches have with the students in that school? I, myself, am in Pebble Hills almost on a daily basis at times, and I have had the opportunity to stand in the same area as Coach Velazquez and the other coaches within the PE program. He has a great relationship with his students. He knows each one of them by name. He knows their life goals. He really gets to know them as individuals. And I, for one, have seen when the special needs students are walking by, and he calls them out by the nicknames that other students call them. He calls them out by their own names. He asks them how their family life is doing. He asks them how they are doing as individuals. He gives them high fives. He sits there and talks to all of the players like if they were his own children. This move that SISD has made to remove Coach Velazquez out of these student-players' lives was a bad call. Players were hurt, disappointed, and even cried when they found out that their beloved coach would not be returning for the season. These students, players, coaches, fellow teachers, all wanted Coach back, and I'm here today to ask you to please reevaluate your decision. The one thing I know that is for certain is that administrators, teachers, coaches, staff, and security guards do not get paid enough money to follow directives from SISD leadership when the leaderships themselves cannot follow their own roles and policies. Thank you.
Ms. Nahara?
Yes, sir, Mr. E.
Could we please ask Dr. Espinoza Superintendent to look into this issue and give us some information later?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Flodis.
Hello, SISD board and directors. I'm here to speak on the players' behalf. Coach Velazquez is the best coach any baseball player could've ever asked for. He treated all his players like he was, like they were his own kids. On the first day of school, when he was introducing himself, he told the players that he didn't care if they learned a single thing about baseball. He cared about the players learning to be responsible growing up to be young men. That's, that's the one thing he preached on the most. He was a great influence on everyone's lives. He, he had, he put his own time to talk to you. He was there early in the morning. He was there whenever you needed him. When it comes to baseball, he was the best coach. When we first stepped on the baseball field as, when I was a freshman, me and this guy were freshmen, our coach told us that he was gonna fix the field no matter what it costed, and it costed him his job. He told us that, oh, my bad, my bad. I'm sorry. The first day when we went out on the baseball field, he sent us out there picking up rocks, grass, and weeds out of our infield, just, just so we could get ground balls on us. It was dangerous, like you couldn't, you couldn't take a ground ball without getting a bad hop. We had kids breaking their noses 'cause, 'cause the ball would hit a rock, pop up, hit them in the face. But he did something no coach would ever do, is risk his job, but he cared about the game and us that much. Finally, after years of coming to the district, asking for them to fix the field, what, what you guys have done when you claimed to fix the field is probably just made the problem worse. You guys would go out there, throw dirt on the field that just had rocks in it, and just caused extra to the problem, and we would just have to go out there and fix it ourselves. But finally, he had an opportunity to fix the field, and he took the opportunity. Now the district, after, after he fixed the infield, now you guys are going back out there to redo what he's, what he tried to fix. And I, I really don't think that's right, like, I don't know. Coach Velazquez was doing everything he had to do to keep his players safe. It sucks that for the past four years, he went to you guys, got nothing, but finally, he, when he comes back, does, makes a decision to fix the field, you guys move him away. A month away from season, like, we, he was our coach for four years. He trained us. He taught, he taught us everything we knew about baseball, and you guys just took him away from us, and that really crushed us, honestly. He was just, he was just caring, looking out for us, and that's it.
Thank you, Nicholas. Item number eight, Public Hearing. A Annual Performance Report, the TAPER 2017, 2018, and the public hearing. Ms. McBane and Ms. Borrego.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Thank you for having us today. Each year, TEA requires each district's Board of Trustees to publish an annual report and to conduct a public hearing. Here to present the 2017, 2018 Annual Performance Report is the Director of Research and Analysis, Ms. Kelly McBane.
Hi, good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board, Dr. Espinoza. This is a presentation on the 2017, 2018 school year for the annual report for Socorro ISD. This is a public hearing, which is a requirement of the Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, that requires districts to publish an annual report and hold a public hearing within 90 days of the TAPER, the Texas Academic Performance Report, posting to the TEA website. The annual performance report contains six required sections. The TAPER report, the actual financial data, campus performance objectives published for each campus and district, the student performance in post-secondary institutions, the report on violent or criminal incidences, and information regarding school violence prevention and intervention. The TAPER comprises the main part of the district's annual report and is the focus of this presentation. The TAPER includes several indicators to include STAR data, attendance, graduation, dropout data, college, career, and military-ready graduates, student profile, student retention rates, and a teacher profile section. These are the areas that are highlighted in this presentation. The 2018 status of Socorro ISD is summarized here. The 2018 accountability rating was an 88, a high B. The 2018 Special Education Determination status is meets requirements, the highest rating, based on the performance-based monitoring and analysis indicators. The 2018 accreditation status is accredited based on accountability and financial data. Socorro ISD received the post-secondary readiness distinction, the only distinction available for districts to earn, and more information on that in a moment. And no schools were reported on the public education grant list. Because all of our campuses received a med standard rating, none of our campuses received an improvement required rating. Socorro ISD is the only district in Region 19 to receive the post-secondary distinction designation. Furthermore, this is a list of the largest districts in Texas. This is sorted by the total number of students enrolled in that district. And if you look at the last column, you'll see Socorro ISD is the largest district in Texas to have received the post-secondary readiness distinction. The next two slides is regarding our campus ratings. All campuses receive the highest rating possible of med standard. New for 2019, all campuses will receive an official letter grade. However, TEA released a preliminary rating for 2018, and over 93% of our campuses would have received an A or a B if the letter grades were official. The first section of the TAPER is the STAR performance data, and I want to give a brief definition of the performance labels before I present the testing data. Approaches grade level means that the student passed the STAR test. Students have knowledge of course content but may be missing some critical elements, requiring additional interventions to truly be successful in the next grade level. Meets grade level is the performance level that represents students with strong knowledge of course content, meeting on-grade level academic instruction, and masters grade level. Students that master the course knowledge and exceeds academic expectations. This is the STAR performance data for each of the content areas for all STAR-tested grade levels that met at approaches grade level. The state is in blue, the region, Region 19 is in orange, and the district is in gray. You can see Socorro ISD is outperforming both the state and the region in all content areas at the approaches grade level, performance level. This is the STAR performance data for the performance level of meets grade level. Socorro ISD is outperforming both the state and the region in all content areas. And this is the performance level of the masters grade level, where Socorro ISD is outperforming the region in all content areas and outperforming the state in math and social studies. This is a comparison of attendance, graduation, and dropout rates, areas that our schools have put a lot of effort into. The attendance rate is comprised of all enrolled students in grades 1 through 12, and it is higher than both the region and state at 96.1%. The four-year graduation rate is at its highest ever at 91.5%, and the dropout rate is at 1.1% lower than both the state and the region. College, career, and military-ready graduates represent students that are prepared for college-level courses without first taking any remediation courses, or already have dual credit courses taken in high school, already received an associate's degree, or are ready to enter into the workforce prepared with an industry-based certification, or have taken a coherent sequence of coursework. Our college, career, military-ready graduates is at 54.4%, higher than both the state and the region, and it is comprised of the following sub-indicators. Students that graduated with at least nine hours of dual credit in any subject, or at least three hours in English Language Arts or Math, and that percentage is 23.8% of our graduates have achieved that. 3% of our high school graduates received an associate's degree. 11.8% received an industry-based certification. This number is more than double the region and four times higher than the state. And students enrolled in a coherent sequence of courses is at 52.4%. And regarding this particular indicator, our district for the prior year was at 17.3, so a 35.1% gain from one year to the next. The last section is student and staff profile information. It provides information on our demographics. Our official student count last year was 46,398 students, with our largest race/ethnic groups at 92.4% Hispanic, 3.7% white, and 2.3% African-American. Our economically disadvantaged population is at 71.4%, with our English learner population at 21.5%, and special education at 9.4%. Our student retention rates by grade level are listed here with rates lower than the state and region in grades K through 8. You can see a jump at grade 9. This is where students lose course credit, not a full year like earlier grades. And our teacher profile section. This is our teacher profiles with comparisons to the state and the region. This is teachers by highest degree held, and you can see that 97.7% of our teachers have at least a masters, or I'm sorry, a bachelor's degree. 2.3% do not hold a degree, and these are trades and industry teachers that are highly qualified through their work experience. Bachelor's degrees, our district has 68.3% of the teachers hold at least a bachelor's degree. 28.8% of those hold a masters, and 0.5% hold a doctorate degree. Teachers by years of experience, you can see between the 11 and 20 years experience, that's where the largest percentage is, at 37.3%. And our teacher turnover rate, lower than both the state and the region, at 8.5%. This is a hearing for public discussion of the annual report, and I'd like to turn it over to Board President Nahara, just listen to public input.
Being that this is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment on our annual performance report? If you would like to, this is your opportunity. Don't knock anybody over rushing up here, please. If there are no comments, thank you very much. Oh, Dr. Espinoza?
Yes. Ms. McBane, could you go back to the slide that has the post-secondary readiness distinction? Yes, right there, as, as you can see, as what Ms. McBane pointed out, this is something that is not easily accomplished, and this school district was able to accomplish with the amazing teachers, custodians, police officers, Team SISD, obviously our amazing students. But there you have the 25 largest districts in the state of Texas. Dallas ISD, 156,000 students. Houston ISD's not on there?
Houston ISD had the Harvey exception.
Okay, there were, 'cause Hurricane Harvey, that's why they were exempt. But these are the 25, and as, again, I just want to emphasize to the audience and, and to the team, that to the right, Dallas ISD, that last column, not earned, Fort Worth, Austin, KD ISD, Conroe, Ardington, not earned, and there, highlighted in yellow, the 17th on this chart was Socorro ISD that earned the post-secondary readiness. And I, I want to emphasize to, to everyone that that's not easily accomplished. As you can see, all these districts across the state did not accomplish that. We were the largest district in the state of Texas. Well, what is post-secondary readiness? They look at graduation rate. They look at how students are performing on their academics, their exams. Are they just passing a test by a 70? No, our students are earning high 90, 95. So this is something that I am tremendously, tremendously proud of. We were the only district here in El Paso. I can't thank the team enough here in Socorro ISD. Now, the other one, if you can go to the graduation rate, Ms. McBane? Right, but go back. 91.5, that second row, that last column, 91.5 graduation rate. That is the highest ever graduation rate for Team SISD. And again, like Ms. McBane mentioned, the, the teams back at the campuses have been working extremely hard, and it starts at pre-K to make sure our students, when they attend high school in 9th grade, that they graduate four years later. So that, as you can see, there's the state and, and the region as well. Also, go to the masters rate, the approaches, but the masters, the masters one. There, again, our students are not just passing an exam at the minimum. They are exceeding. We're outperforming the region. We're outperforming the state. And lastly, to our amazing teachers, go where you had the teacher turnover rate, because I think it may have been some, it may have been gone. Some people didn't realize it, that very bottom, teacher turnover rate. Our teachers, our employees like working here, as you can see on the TEA data, 8.5% as far as turnover rate compared to the region here in El Paso and to the state. The state, the region are losing teachers. Here, people get a job here, and they want to stay here because they are happy. So I can go on and on with this report. Just want to thank Ms. McBane, Ms. Borrego, and the entire school district for the success that we've had. And like I said earlier, winning as an example was HEB finalists, and not even being in an HEB market really speaks volumes about what's happening in SISD that people across the state are taking notice. So, thank you, President Nahara.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Ms. McBane, Ms. Borrego, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, District Reports. A Dual Language Academy, Ms. Borrego.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, good evening, and thank you for having us up here. Super excited about this next presentation. We're getting amazing feedback. We've had our first task force committee meeting. We are introducing today our Dual Language Academy. We will be starting next year in the 2019, 2020 school year, opening in two schools, so I'd like to give a brief presentation of what that will look like. Before I do that, this has been an amazing adventure and venture as we've started rolling this out. I want to thank Dr. Espinoza for his innovation, for he inspiring us to go forward with this. Want to also thank Director of Bilingual, Ms. Veronica Reyes, and all the hours she's put through. And then also here with us today are the two principals of the two schools that will be having the first two dual-language academies, and Ms. Chavaria from Sushuk. be having the first two dual-language academies, and Ms. Chavaria from Sushuk Elementary, and Ms. Miranda right here from Myrtle Cooper Elementary. And I tell them, all the late meetings that we have and all the hard work, I tell them it's going to be worth it because you're going to be able to say, "I was there, I had the boots on the ground," and the groundwork when we see all the success. So, the first slide, and I think you have it there in front of you, we're very excited. This is the official logo for Academia de Dos Idiomas, the Dual Language Academy. And if you notice in the middle, the logo has a DL for dual language, but if you notice the L has a little bit of a separation, so it also looks like an I, which is Dos Idiomas, because idiomas is an I. So I want to thank Daniel and his team for the awesome job that they did with that as well. We had our first task force committee meeting this last Wednesday on the sixteenth. It comprised of about twenty-five people, and everybody had input, so we've got good systems in place, and that was the logo that was voted on, so we're very excited about that. We're going to meet again on February fifth to review before we go to our first parent night. So, as we met at that task force, we developed a vision and a mission for our program. So students will become, the vision is students will become bilingual and belligerent in English and Spanish through rigorous instruction and multicultural experiences. And the mission is going to be SISD Dual Language Academies will provide students the resources necessary to be academically, socially, and linguistically successful in both English and Spanish to become globally competitive citizens. The program goals that were developed by the task force that we came together is we're going to have three goals: bilingualism and belligerency, high academic achievement, of course, as part of Team SISD, and social-cultural competence. The SISD Dual Language Academies will be at two campuses. Like I said earlier, it'll be at Myrtle Cooper Elementary and at Sushuk Elementary as well. Those schools were chosen for multiple reasons, a lot of that being also that they're in the center of the district. If you look at the district, and it's kind of a big circle around, because we want to make sure that we're also being conscientious of our parents as well, so that they're accessible. The two thousand nineteen, twenty implementation at Myrtle Cooper, what it'll look like, it'll be two sections of kindergarten, forty-four students, and two sections of first grade, which will be forty-four students, and it'll repeat the same thing at Sushuk. Kindergarten will be two sections, forty-four students, and first grade will be two sections, forty-four students. This summer, we will be hosting our very first bridge camp, especially for our kiddos that will be accepted into the first grade. We will start them, all the kids off, with a bridge camp in the summer, so that we ensure their success when they start the program. I'm really excited to say that teacher interviews start tomorrow, and the pool was amazing. We had a great interest within our district and outside of our district, both for English and Spanish, and you'll be happy to know, we're very excited that the interviews for the Spanish, the bilingual teacher will be in Spanish, all in Spanish. They'll have to write in Spanish, the interview will be in Spanish, so we're very excited about that. And the instructional officer position will close on the thirty-first, and then we'll have interviews for that as well. If you look on here, the model that we're going to follow, we're going to do a two-way dual-language fifty-fifty, that means fifty percent English, fifty percent Spanish. That'll be the partnering language. And then the student selection, without getting too much into it, it is going to be a lottery system, and we're developing that still through the task force, but it will be a lottery system. We're going to be very transparent with it. We're going to mirror the same lottery system that our other academies use at the high schools, so that we use the exact same system. And we're working on the application process, the application per se, with the, through the task force. The application deadline will be April the twelfth. We were originally going to have it a little sooner, but then we realized that April sixth is pre-K and Kinder registration at all the campuses, so we want to be able to advertise there and see if we can't get some other kiddos to apply, especially those that, we don't know some pre-k'ers that are at home that are going to come register for Kinder for next year. So we're excited, and we want to give them the opportunity, also kids that are moving into SISD. The next one is our four community information nights. These are going to be held, they will be in both English and Spanish for our parents. We are going to hold them at Myrtle Cooper and Sushuk, because we want parents to see the campuses, and we want them to be able to drive there, so that they know the length of time that it gets to, that it takes to get there. So we've had four, that doesn't mean we won't have more, but we're going to start off with these four. We have one in every week of February, and we tried to pick days where one was a Wednesday, one was a Thursday, one was a Monday, in case parents, you know, there's some parents that only have Wednesdays off. So we try to be mindful of that to help the parents as well and get as much information out. We'll also have PR, we're working very closely with our PR department. We are going to have flyers that are going to go out to all of the schools, we're going to send out calls, we're going to webpage, and all the way that we could reach to as much opportunity. We invite you to attend one of our community meetings, as we will have a lot more information. We are, we do believe that we need to educate parents so they understand truly what this is, and if it's right for their child. So we're really excited in this development. We're learning, we're growing, and it's a great opportunity for all of us, and want to thank you also for the opportunity. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions?
Sí, claro que sí. Empezamos con las noches de...
He just blew it. Any other questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Item nine B, facilities report, Mr. Inkton.
Are there roofs?
A lot of them.
Are we going to applaud like we did, Ms. Borrego?
You have to say it in Spanish.
Good evening, everyone. President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My presentation begins on page forty-three. The facility report for the two thousand and seventeen bond program. The first school is Socorro High School Reconstruction Project. We are moving fast and furious with that project in order to hopefully start some work this summer on some site. Currently, all this week, we've had, we have a company out there, Survey West, which is a mapping company that is out there determining where all of our utilities are and everything on our sixty-eight-plus acre site. So, once we do start construction, hopefully we will determine the location of those utilities and either relocate them in order to avoid any cutting of any services. In February, the fourth and the fifth, we have another series of projects, or a series of meetings with the architect and the construction manager to meet with the departments and go over the various status of the design development, and we are actually proceeding into construction documents. Our goal is, like I said, to have some formal guarantee maximum price GMP proposals to you in late spring in order for us to start some of the construction this summer on Socorro High School. Cactus Trails Elementary School is moving along. This was our first project that we started under the two thousand and seventeen bond program. We're doing a lot of exterior work still, a lot of buildings going up, no roofs yet, but you'll see that there will be some roofs in the future. We have, in kind of comparison to where we were here and where we were with Carrasco School a year or so ago, we're actually a little bit ahead of that schedule, so we feel comfortable that here is the, an aerial of it. You can see that majority of our walls, our tilt walls, are in position. If they're not in position, erected and stuff, they're, they have been poured or being erected. So the project is moving, and we're still working on the site, and once we get the building totally up and enclosed, we will start the interior work on it. Some additional pictures showing the panels and some of the other, on the casting beds, preparing to be, you can see the crane in the background lifting, preparing to lift the panels in place. Montwood High School, one of the high school improvement project, we are moving on that. We have met and reviewed the design and the budget. I was hoping to bring you some exterior elevations of the pictures. We do have some, however, we're working on one of the exterior renderings that has a different logo than what we should have on it. It has the Dodge Ram instead of the Montwood Ram.
Oh.
So I didn't want to show that, so, but it does look good. And we will show that at our facility committee and at next month's board meeting. We do have an agenda item later in the agenda that has to do with a early package on the sports line for that particular project. America's High School, we met with the architects and the CM on that last week, and have reviewed some preliminary budget and on the schematic designs, and that project is continuing. We are working with all the administrations to do a follow-up meetings, which we will inform you as far as those community meetings come about. We also had a review meeting last week with Eldorado High School with their architect, PSRBB, and Dan Tech Construction, and have gotten some information on that, and we will continue to work on that. And we all plan to try to bring some early packages in order for us to start some work, like I said, this summer on at least the high schools, the major high schools. The new student activity complex, we are getting close to finalize the contract on the remaining portion of the property, and we have been working with, through our broker on that and our legal counsel, so that is being closer and closer to be finalized. Hopefully, we'll finalize that here in the next thirty days or so. The auxiliary gyms at the sixteen campuses, those are proceeding. We are meeting the, formalized the bid packages. We're working with the various departments to review the project. We still are putting together with purchasing a package to do individual surveying and for each of the partial surveying where the auxiliary gyms will be built, and we're hopes that that will be finalized here in the next few weeks. And then I think the last one is the support service technology project. We have a follow-up meeting with the architects tomorrow, all morning long, to kind of review it with the technology department and to go over some questions and stuff that they have on some electrical requirements, and to meet with Mr. Raina and his department to review the design and proceed after we have their comments. New middle school in the East Lake area and the prototypical elementary school. Here again, we are working with our broker, real estate broker, to finalize the acquisition of that property, and should have that wrapped up here in the next few, next thirty days or so. And I believe that ends my report. I'll entertain any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Inkton.
Thank you.
And item nine C, Safety and Security Committee update, Ms. Macias.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, representatives of the Safety and Security Committee will provide an update regarding Texas Governor Abbott's School Safety Action Plan. Before they start, if I could have all of our safety committee, if y'all could please stand. I have Mr. Ismael Castro, Chief Castorena, Tabby McCabon, Sergeant Jesus Delgado, Rebecca Madrid, Mario Carmona, Ms. Kristy Flores, Mr. Rito Mesa, David Carrasco, Mr. Renee Vargas, Mr. Jesse Sepulveda, principal, thank you for being here, and Mr. Richard Ortega. So I just wanted to make sure to share and give them the thanks, because I know it's a lot of work, and they're always looking out for the best interest of our students.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Nahara, School Board President, School Board members, Dr. Espinoza. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update with regard to our Safety and Security Committee. We've been doing a lot of work with regard to the initiative that we've been using with Keep SISD Safe, so it is aligned with Governor Abbott's School Safety Action Plan. So basically, what we've been following is mental health piece of it, emergency management and law enforcement, and we've been basically taking the show on the road. And we've been presenting to our community members with Keep SISD Safe, presenting to them all the information, all the services that we have for them. So, pass it along to Ms. McCabon, so she can talk a little bit about mental health services.
Thank you. I'll just be covering just a moment some of the things that we're doing mental, in the mental health area. One of the things that we're doing is we're training all of our new employees on suicide protocol and how to deal with students that might be having suicide outcries. That includes our substitutes, all new employees, it includes everyone that comes into the district. We're also making sure that all of our current employees are trained on suicide protocols through a program that we have called SPTS University. It's a two-hour program, and all employees have to complete it. We did it last year, and we're doing it again this year for new employees, and then we're going to have another program for our current employees. Also, we did initiate our Mental Health Awareness Task Force two years ago that we've been working on. This year, our project has been to create vignettes or small videos for the counselors to show the students, and currently, Montwood High School has created the first one on bullying that we shared with our principals just recently, and with some of our counselors. And so each one of our high schools will be creating vignettes on cyberbullying, how to deal with harassment, how to deal with many, many things. We'll show these to the students so that we can help them to become aware of what they need to do when they get into a situation. And we'll also be creating these for mental, for middle school students and for elementary students as well. So those are just some of the updates on some of the things that we're doing through this for the mental health aspect.
And then to add to that, we've been working with everybody, providing them information with regard to standard response protocol. Basically, standard response protocol is part of Governor Abbott's School Safety Action Plan, and it's in regard to emergency drills, basically lockout, lockdown, evacuation, shelter, and hold. Just to note, so far within our schools, we've conducted four hundred and eighty-six emergency drills, which is the standard response protocol, and we've been going out and presenting information to our stakeholders with regard to what is the standard response protocol and what we expect for students and staff members to do during that process. Sergeant Delgado is going to add a little bit with regard to that.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. Along with Mr. Castro, we've been working in conjunction to provide this information to the parents, the school district employees, community, and we've been very successful regarding the program. It's very important for us to continue with the information and the instruction as far as the five different types of protocol that has been given, this instruction for the governing habit. And we want to thank you for allowing us and being supportive regardless of the keeping the society safe, and to continue with the, with the support as far as giving the information to everyone on attempt to actually accomplish our main goal. Thank you.
And lastly, they're being modest, because when they say that we have been taking our show on the road, we recently presented at the city and county level, the nine-one-one center, our plan, and... our plan, and they enjoyed it. They enjoyed it and they wanted to come, they want us to come back and entertain some other folks from in and around the city. And we also applied to go into a SBLE conference in June to present our plan at the state level, and so, we're waiting for a response on that. And if that happens, then we will be taking this into the state level, so, I just thought I'd put that in there. Thank you.
Very cool. Very cool.
And just to add to that, to what Chief Castorena was talking about, we've done a very good job in terms of reaching out to our stakeholders to include the different entities with regard to law enforcement. Whenever we have our SIS, Keep SISD Safe, we've had them at our Medicus High School, at Eastlake, we did those two on a Saturday, and then we also had DPS show up, we had other entities show up, and they were part of the presentation and when we went through that process. In addition to that, we also had the opportunity to present at the Office of Emergency Management as Chief Castorena mentioned, also at Region Nineteen. We're part of the parent engagement process, and we presented the process with how we were talking to stakeholders with regard to our approach. And more importantly, it's more of a communication piece with our stakeholders because that's very important. They're asking us about mental health, they're asking us about emergency drills, they're asking us what's the role of law enforcement. We had the opportunity, especially with the Americas, we did the father-son conference also, we participated in that, and it really presented the opportunity for us to provide one-on-one information with what we do within our schools, within those roles. In addition to that, we've also started our new training with Stop the Bleeding with what's called the Border Advisory Committee, Border Rack. And what we've done is basically trained one hundred and ten police officers and nurses with regard to how to use a tourniquet. Okay, how to use a tourniquet is very important, so we've done that process, we reached out to the community. Participants with regard to Keep SISD, we've had so far one hundred and thirty participants at our sessions, and we're going to continue doing that because it's very important that we communicate to our stakeholders what we're doing in our schools to keep our schools safe. Our next one is going to be, and note this, Safety and Security Committee is going to be this Saturday, the mother-daughter conference, so we're going to be out there presenting information to them. Okay? That's all we have for you. Thank you for the opportunity. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions?
Ms. Nahida, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. You know, in light of, and I remember one of the presentations that was made to us, one of our committee meetings last year, year before last, I got very emotional and choked up with it, with the information that the Safety Committee was sharing, you know, and in this day and age, we just never know. So, I just want to say thank you all, Ms. Macias, Mr. Castro, Chief, the service that you provide to keep our students safe, we really do appreciate that. Thank you all so much for your, for your hard work. You know, when we're looking at mental health issues, you know, we just honored somebody in today's board meeting because of a team that took medical action for one of our own. You know, again, thank you all so much for the work that you do.
And just to add to what you're talking about, that's part of our hold drill. So, when we do a hold drill, that's because there's a medical event, so we call a hold and then our medical response team goes to the incident and responds to it. So, that's part of the standard response protocol. Thank you for that. Two important Security Committee members that we need to note is President Nahida and Dr. Spinosa because they're part of the committee also, and we invite you all to be part of it because we go through that process and we talk about the things we're doing in the schools. And more importantly, to find those gaps within our school system to address those and have those systems in place. Thank you.
Again, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Castro, I would like to add, and to all of the committee members who provide such valuable input, and I love that our Safety Committee works with all law enforcement entities so that we're all on the same page. And God forbid, if anything were to happen, then we have access to all law enforcement in El Paso to assist us. And, one of the other things that we've talked about many times is, you know, our students will do a fire drill at school, our lockout drill, and it's done because it's required by law to be done, and that's it. But, here in SISD, we go way beyond that, and the kids understand why it's done, and it's second nature to them. Because we all know that in that moment of a true emergency, that most of the time, if it's not second nature, it's going to be forgotten.
Yes.
And our kids, you know, all the drills that we perform with all of our students are done on a repetitive schedule so that it is second nature to them, and that's going to make the difference if it's ever a true emergency. And for that, we are eternally grateful for all of y'all's hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item number ten, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? I do believe this is the shortest consent agenda I've ever seen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gettler. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Gettler.
I'm sorry, I, was it?
No, listen.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item eleven, new business, a consider approval fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget priorities and calendar. Mr. Ressa.
Yes, President Nahida, Dr. Spinosa, members of the board. Tonight, the administration is requesting consideration and approval of the 2019-20 budget priorities and calendar. These priorities and the calendar were developed through the Superintendent's Cabinet and have been submitted for review and input through the various board committees, and we thank you all for your thoughtful questions and comments during these meetings. So, before you is a listing of the priorities that are going to be included in next year's budget. I am not going to go through all these individually since most of you have already heard them before. I'd just like to highlight a couple for the audience. Number one, we would have a commensurate general pay increase for all eligible Socorro ISD employees to fully staff Cactus Trails Elementary School, which is scheduled to open in July of 2019. Also, provide funding for additional personnel along with textbooks and transportation for the new early college high schools that are going to be at Eldorado High School, Pebble Hills High School, Eastlake High School. And that funding would be provided for the boundary changes that pertain to the transformation of Antoine and Paso del Norte into a middle school and elementary configuration, respectively. Now, these priorities are the starting point, and as we add additional items through the budget process, we'll inform the board via the budget workshops. But before I discuss the budget calendar, I'd like to just go over some information with respect to the upcoming legislative session. So, for the first time in many years, there's a consensus in both chambers that this public school finance is a priority. The Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, and the Speaker of the House have all publicly stated that school finance reform and property tax relief must be addressed. And it appears that there is money in this legislative session to accomplish this. So, the comptroller projects one hundred and nineteen point one billion dollars in money for the upcoming session. This is an increase of almost nine billion dollars from the current biennium. Moreover, the Economic Stabilization Fund, which is known as the rainy day fund, is projected to grow to fifteen point four billion dollars, which is an increase of almost six point three billion dollars over the current state funding fiscal period. Now, the House-based budget proposes seven billion dollars in new state funding to address school financial reform and property tax relief. Their budget also includes using six hundred and sixty-three million dollars of the rainy day fund to address retired teachers' healthcare for funding of school safety and disaster relief programs associated with Hurricane Harvey. Now, on the other side, the Senate proposes using four point three million dollars in additional funding for public school finance with three point seven billion dollars going toward teacher pay raises, sufficient to increase a teacher's base salary by five thousand dollars. Now, what we're hearing is that proposal is only for the 2019-20 biennium with no guarantee that this will continue beyond this time period. So, we're in the process of seeing if this is indeed true or if they're going to ensure that this funding continues into the next biennium after that. Now, both plans are having, provide, both plans have additional funding to address student enrollment growth and to provide property tax relief. However, with respect to property tax relief, it remains to be seen as the increase in the state share of funding will actually translate into significant increases in the total funding on a per-student basis. Now, it's likely that some of the proposed changes to the current funding formula will take their lead from the recommendations made by the Texas Commission on Public School of Finance. This commission met at various times during 2018, listening to various experts and stakeholders on the issues pertaining to the current funding formulas and the recapture, and recapture. And in the end, they made thirty-five separate recommendations. Now, several of these recommendations tie into one specific consideration, which is to redirect about three point five billion dollars in existing allotments towards the basic allotment. In other words, they want to eliminate the cost of education index, the gifted and talent allotment, and the high school allotment, and use those funds to increase the basic allotment from the present five thousand one hundred and forty dollars to about five thousand four hundred dollars. Now, if they do eliminate these allotments, this will have an impact on our budget allocations and the process. So, with that thought in mind, I'd like to go into the budget calendar that we're proposing for the adoption of the budget. The proposed calendar is very similar to last year, so here are the pertinent dates for the budget development period. As you can see, we'll send out the department and campus allocations in January and February, and in February, we will also be doing staffing for the campuses. The department budget means will take place in February, and the campus budget means will take place in March. Now, I want to let you know that all our schools get gifted and talented funds, and our high schools get a large amount of funding from the high school allotment. If these allotments are indeed eliminated and funds folded into the basic allotment by legislative action, it may be, and it may be at a time when our campus budgets have already been reviewed and said, we may have to approve the campus budgets as they are and ask you to adopt the budget and then amend those budgets after the fact or after the budget's been adopted. We don't know yet. We'll see, and we'll provide you updates as we're going through the budget workshops. The budget workshop schedule is the same as last year with meetings ranging from March through June. Note that our compensation proposal will be discussed in the May budget workshop, and it'll be approved in the regular May board meetings that we have in prior years. Also, we still need to determine date for the March budget workshop, so get information from you guys and see where you, what date you want to meet. And here is the calendar for the adoption of the budget and the tax rate. The budget will be approved at the regularly scheduled June board meeting, and the tax rate will be adopted in August. Finally, please remember that the calendar is subject to change should any scheduling conflicts come up during the year. So, are there any questions with respect to the priorities or the calendar?
Are there any questions? Fund begins, Mr. Ressa.
Yes, ma'am. I'll need a motion to adopt priorities.
Motion to adopt. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. AU and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Thank you, ma'am.
Continue with new business, item B, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price for sports lighting package at Montwood High School. Mr. Eington?
Yes, members of the board, as I've stated in my facility report, I'm going to bring a item for approval for the first phase of construction, the sport lighting package for Montwood High School. On page one twelve is the agenda item. Administration is recommending consideration of approval of this item, the guaranteed maximum price presented by Beaufort Thompson Company in the amount of one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and two dollars for the sports lighting package at Montwood High School. Back in March of twenty-seventh of two thousand nineteen, eighteen, the board recommend and awarded the construction manager at risk for this. The approval tonight for this GMP will allow Beaufort Thompson, in conjunction with our purchasing department, to accept proposal or to put proposals out and to bid the project in the spring, and then we would start construction once the season is over. If the board approves tonight, I will work with our legal counsel to prepare amendment number one to the agreement between the construction manager dated March twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one million one seventy-three, five oh two. Administration recommends approval as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion?
Ms. Nahida.
Mr. AU.
Mr. Eington, this is the first lighting package of the fields we're going to do?
Yes.
Why are we taking them all three together?
Because they're under each, they're designed under each individual package. There's a CM approved for each, each project, so it's individual.
So, at this point, we also don't have a comparison on cost?
No. No.
Is there going to be coordination? I mean, the concern here is it's going to come a little piecemeal. We've got a large project happening in Mawood already. Is there any cost savings between the two projects? This is the lighting package in the back, then we're building a big building up front, and I notice you have a lot of money here for redoing landscaping, sprinkler system, which I'm not sure what sprinklers, because we don't have grass anymore, and this is for shrubbery and stuff.
Right.
Is there a coordination of efforts?
Yeah, there will be coordination. This just allows us to get started. We'll have one similar to this for Socorro High School because we have to physically move one of those fields in order to take, to start the actual building construction. And the same thing's going to happen at Americas where we're coming in and putting the light in, in Eldorado. The only other two are Pebble Hills and Socorro High School, I mean Pebble Hill and Eastlake that we will be looking at to put together. But they were, the four high schools, the four major CM projects had individual construction managers. That's why we're separating it.
Okay, so, and maybe my memory's not as good as I thought, but I thought we did, we have a contract out for the renovation of Mawood, but then we have a contract out for the sports facilities and other things. I thought that was all together. Was that, I'm not correct there?
No, it's, it was a separate funding source in the bond. It just rolls over into the construction project.
And Beaufort Thompson is also doing the renovation of Mawood?
Yes. Yes.
So, why does this come first and not the building first? Is there an order of construction here?
No, because we're still, we're still designing the building. We don't have the building complete. We want to, we want to get, you know, as much as we can get done this summer.
Right.
So, that's why we're starting. Like I said, we're going to have three more started.
Sure. And we can roll this up into one guaranteed maximum? We're going to have a guaranteed maximum for this and a guaranteed maximum for the campus?
We could.
I'm still wondering about, you know, savings of two projects.
We could, but we couldn't start the project. We wouldn't have it completed before the season began. If we started, if we bid it out and we do the work this summer, it will be ready for the start of the season next year. If we waited to combine it with the construction package, it would be a year later.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
Item C, consider approval of order and notice of election for May fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Macias.
President Nahida, Dr. Spinosa, members of the board. An election is ordered for Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and the purpose for this proposal today is we have three positions on the Board of Trustees that will go up for election, trustee District One, and two at-large positions for a four-year term, which will end on May twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. The polling places and the election precincts are, as included, within the order for trustee election. Early voting will begin on Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, and will continue until Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. On Election Day, which is Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and nineteen, the polls shall open from seven to seven P.M. With those details, administration recommends approval of the order of notice for election as presented and so noted within the documents.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. AU and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias. Item twelve, executive session, the meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for assistant principal positions at various campuses, and to hear Superintendent Midcycle's formal evaluation update under Texas Government Code, Section- Sections five-five-one point zero seven-one, five-five-one point zero seven-two, and five-five-one point zero seven-four. The time is seven fifty-one. We are adjourned. We are back in session. The time is nine thirty-five. Thirteen, new business, consider approval of administrative recommendations. A, Mission Ridge Elementary School. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara and members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Miguel Rebeles to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Mission Ridge Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. B, Paso del Norte School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Anna Carroll to assume all the roles and responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Paso del Norte.
Sorry. I have to leave now.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gandita and a second by Mr. Gettner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Did he abstain?
C, Eldorado High School. Oh, my God. Eldorado High School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Janet Carrillo to assume the roles and responsibilities as new assistant principal at Eldorado High School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gandita. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item D, Socorro High School.
President Nahara, members of the board, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is nine thirty-seven.